Gassen.
Yes, here.
Hauser.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Bachmann.
Here.
Klausser.
Here.
Kenjuk.
Here.
Lloyd.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Stone.
All right, how about we join in to do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone from the public like to make any comments? Anybody online?
No one's online.
Okay, we covered that. Approval of meeting minutes from December 2024. Any comments on those from the commission? How about a motion to approve into the record?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Support.
Commissioner Murphy supports. Any questions on the motion? Vote call please.
Gassen.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bachmann.
Yes.
Klausser.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Okay, we have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to considerations. We have one item tonight, and I assume we have applicant in the audience?
Yes.
And a planner online to provide a report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may set it up here.
As soon as Mr. Mayor.
So we're gonna see if John's on there or not. I just texted him.
Yeah, I'm here.
There he is, okay, great. So John, I'm gonna lead into this, so, uh, thank you, Commissioner, Happy New Year to everybody. So, years ago, we made a good attempt at trying to get the community house off, off, off the docket here, and, the first step was get site plan approval, get through all that, we did that, it took a while, we got it all set up, city council backed the plan, and when we went out to bid, it came out, um, a lot over budget, so we were not able to pull the trigger at that time. So, didn't give up, Alan does not give up easily, so, working with our, our, now our mayor, Nancy Salvia, and the board at the community house was reinvigorated, and they worked hard, and we worked with our, every granting source we could get, and we were able to accomplish getting a $2 million grant, in order to push this project forward. Our best guess, working with Rewald, who is our general contractor, is it was gonna be about 2.7... So we went back to city council, talked about, when we were looking at the skate park and the community house, how could we bond, what was our sweet spot for a bond, to cover that extra seven on the community house, the 500 for the skate park, got council to agree to that. So we're just kinda muddling through with the government to get our money. So, in the meantime, because AEW helped out a ton, the architects, Rewald kept working at it, trying to find, get it to a finite point where we knew exactly what we wanted, which was a little different than what was approved the first go-round. Hence, we are here this evening. Tonight, we are looking for, uh, to set a public hearing for two things, for a site plan, and then for a special exception, again, back in the day, when we thought we were gonna close down the community house, Alan needed to keep his commitment to the people in the, doing your whole story.
Keep going, keep going.
Right, so, okay, so, so that, to fulfill the obligations of the people that had already booked, because they tried to book a year in advance, we had put up the temporary tent, had a pad for it. Uh, planning commission gave one extension after the first year, worked out great, didn't build, left the pad. Now, that we're gonna build, same thing, we're gonna run into that situation where we need to have that tent up, so, we're gonna ask for another special exception for a year during the construction procedure, to, uh, to actually accommodate the people that are going to be there. So it'll be two different things, we'll advertise them as a special exception, public hearing, and a site plan, public hearing. So, we've been working back and forth between AEW and McKenna to try to get, uh, the report ready for tonight, to go on for the February meeting. So John Jackson's subbing in for Vidya, Vidya's, I believe, out of the country, John, and he'll go over the report. Nothing in it is major, it's a couple of changes to the facade, a little bit of work that Alan will describe in the rear of the property, um, nothing major, so, John, do you wanna take us through that?
Sure, thanks, Nick. So, uh, obviously, Nick is very familiar with this project, and, uh, so it's Vidya having reviewed the original proposal. Vidya's comments are very minor in nature, she's really just asking for some clarification on what the differences are between the original proposal and the revised proposal. She noticed a couple of things that she had questions about with respect to pathway, locations, interminations, uh, at the northwest corner there. But by and large, she's, she's happy with the, the status of the proposal, and is recommending that it be placed on the next available planning commission meeting, uh, agenda for public hearing, uh, at that time. The one issue that she did bring up that I think may deserve some discussion, and that is, uh, the, uh, screen wall between the parking and the neighbors. Uh, it looks like back in 2021, when this was originally approved, uh, the neighbors indicated they didn't want any screening, and we just wanna make sure that that's still the case. Uh, I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't be, but we just wanna verify that this is gonna be the subject of a public hearing, so the neighbors will have the opportunity to be there and participate in that, so, really, that's all the comments that Vidya had, and again, her recommendation is, uh, for this to be put on the next available agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can give an update for, for John. So, in the fall, and the summer, and spring, I met with Amy next door, and part of that was for the tent, we wanted to try to provide her with some screen, couldn't come to an agreement. Some commitments were made from our end that never got lived up.
Excuse me, Nick, is Amy a neighbor, or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Amy's adjacent neighbor to the pastor, she's on the south side of Wilcox, uh, I'm sorry, on the west side of Wilcox, the little house right there. And her backyard, there's a natural screen there, and she didn't wanna wall, she wanted vegetation, so, there's some commitments made from the city, all that were never followed up on. She reminded me over the years, and I got with her last spring, and if you go over there now, there were six beautiful evergreens planted, a river rock, um, um, path to take the water away to a catch base that goes underneath Wilcox, down into the park, that was all completed. She wanted, um, rhododendrons, no, she wanted hydrangeas planted that she would take care of, so that really screened anything from her garage to her front. That was all accomplished through the tree fund, and then the fund that we had to do some of this project, so that is now taking care of that, screen's established, and we're good to go there. So Vidya did not know that, uh, but we took care of that this fall.
Thanks for the update.
And Amy was happy.
Uh, to the commission, uh, are there any comments from what you've reviewed? Yes, Commissioner Hauser.
Okay, so, you know, I've had the good fortune of being up here during the first iteration and subsequent conversations, and I think maybe I would like to hear from the applicant. You know, I think number one is, in, we look at Vidya's letter where there's some uncertainty about the changes between what was presented initially and then what was presented in this packet, and I think, Mr. Smith, if you wouldn't mind, for some of the newer members, maybe going through the process and the plans, and you know, there's some comments in the drawings about scope and not in scope, and really just being clear as to what this project involves, what it doesn't involve, the timeframe, et cetera, just, again, maybe for a refresher for some of us who have been here already, and then obviously, uh, for some of the newer members who, this might be their first time.
Before we do that, Mr. Smith, we're gonna hear from the rest of the commission, they may have some questions that you can address when you do get to the podium. So is there any questions, uh, from the commission, Commissioner Lord?
I just had one, um, looking through the plans, I didn't see a grading plan associated with the new addition and the work being done there. Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure this is, um, there's an answer to this, but, what it looked like is it's about a 10-foot difference between the finished floor elevation of the first floor down to the basement, and if I carry the existing finished floor, assuming that the new addition's gonna be at the same level as the current, um, building finished floor, it looks like that basement, um, door coming out in the back is gonna be about two feet lower than what it is now, so, which is starting to get really close to that floodplain elevation, so, just something to be aware of. Like I say, I'm sure it's been thought through and fine, but I just, not having a grading plan is difficult to see, but just kinda doing the, the math, it looked, it was getting pretty close.
Thank you, Commissioner Lord, any others? Commissioner Bachmann?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
I just, I just have a, a question, um, probably more for Nick, um, but going through the, the landscape plan, which was, like, way more detailed, I think, than, than the other parts, but, um, there's a, a long list of trees, what's gonna remain, what's gonna go, um, is there, uh, so some of them will be replaced, some of them won't, and I guess it probably depends if they're big or whatever, um, but is there a, um, like, a recommended or a, a guideline for, I mean, this is, this is, I, I don't know what the legal, uh, uh, lay of the land is here, is it the park where these trees are, or is it separate? And if it's the park, should, um, should the city have some say in what gets replaced there?
It's a fair question, if I should answer, yes, through the chair. Um, so, what we do is, it is the park property, we own the building, uh, the community house is the tenant, so all of that is our property, so, or, since the original approval, we've taken down many big oaks there, because it was wrecking the roof, doing different things, so, and then we've replaced them elsewhere in the park, so, Alan and I talked about this, basically, what's out there today in front of the building is going to be relocated off, away from the building while work is being done, and put back. We, they like the look of the building now. It's not what was built, proposed the first time around, but once they got comfortable with it, and Senator Corey came in and they did their work, and then Mr. Nicholson donated a lot of money for landscaping, he had to have his wedding there, and he wanted it jazzed up, and got the building painted, and relandscaped it, so, what we, the plan is to keep what is there, um, today, and make sure it's just put back in properly. I talked to Councilwoman, um, Trent today about, if there were new trees, we could try to keep them native trees, and make sure that they fit in with the park, absolutely, we would do that. If there's more, that will be done in the back as we start doing some work, but, in essence, Alan, I think I'm correct to say, we're trying to keep what's there now, it's mature, but we can relocate it and then put it back in front of the building, so, that would be the short answer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick, Commissioner Klausser?
No questions.
There's Salvia?
Nope, very familiar with this one.
Last, uh, Commissioner Kenzuk, anyone?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little, um, not being familiar with the background here, I'm, I'm a little confused in regards to the relationship of the community house to the city. You said the city owns the property and the building? Correct. And then, is the, is that a managing organization? Correct. So, okay, so they're a third party in essence? Correct. Okay.
And Alan is the director of that.
Okay.
Commissioner Hauser?
I, and again, this is more of a comment than a question, but when the applicant comes up, if he could also spend a little bit of time on the basement, you know, I'm looking at the drawing here on the basement, I just want a little bit more clarification, because that is money that's coming from the city, and I wanna be certain that everyone understands, at least me in particular, really what's gonna be working, uh, the renovations and that's in the basement.
Okay, floor is all yours.
Okay, well, thank you very much for stepping out on this lovely, warm, January evening, folks. Um, as Nick said, when, uh, when, when it became apparent.
Could you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't do this every day. Alan Smith, I'm the executive director for just shy of seven years at the Community House, which is a nonprofit that next July 1st celebrates its 50th anniversary. So Mary Lee Qualcheck created the place, did a fantastic job, unfortunately, Mary Lee is not in best of health right now, um, and Nick just mentioned Jim Nicholson, who lives on the corner, uh, with the terracotta roof, as you enter into the parking lot, Jim is not in good health at all, and he donated, it was a lot of money, because he painted the front of the building, he was in very poor repair, and, um, clean, uh, had the roof cleaned, and then all the landscaping went in. So he, uh, it, it was a great time for us, because that was two, beginning of 2019, when that was done. That's why we're gonna do our best to preserve, um, the, the stuff that's there right now, all the, uh, the bushes and everything, and we've already told with Rewald about it, and maybe we'll get a landscaper in, get them to move it, and, um, and so on. So as Nick said, just backing up, um, the, the primary thing that we started, uh, was to, we hired Oak Street Design, we did offer it back to AEW to redraw it. Uh, there were some things that, when we got involved with it, we didn't need the basement as big, and, uh, Christian is on about the, I'll, we'll get to the basement in a little while. Uh, we didn't need the basement as big, um, and I forgot to put on this, I presume you all got this, uh, my apologies, I didn't put on there that one of the, on the front of the building, um, the pictures show two very large dormer windows. We do not need light coming into the main room from the west, so we made that into three smaller fake dormers, because that roof line, when you stand in the parking lot looking east, it's gonna be huge, because it goes up to the ha, total height of the building, and down it runs west to east, at the moment, it runs north-south, so it's gonna change, so, there will be proposed to have three dormers instead of two, they will be fake, and it also cut costs. So one of the big reasons that we did, we got Jenna Campbell involved, she used somebody that she works with to stamp all the drawings, an architect's, Cody, and so we've gone through the process of doing it. Number one goal was to save money. So originally, what came back on the bid, um, years ago, was 3.3 million in total. So when we've had, Rewald's have been great with us for five years, for no money at all. So they've been constantly there with advice, with Frank's blessing, and the boys, and they came in, they've done various budgets on it and works on it, it's never been bid out since, but they came in at around 2.7 million with the basement. So I'm gonna go, I'll, I'll get to the drawing later on the basement, so, in the course of events, we first presented it, um, at 2.7 million to City, and, um, it didn't fly, it was too high. We could do the job, just the ground floor and the out-of-scope items for around 2 million. That got approved. Then, the $2 million grant arrived, so we had to go back to the drawing board, completely finish off the original plans that had a basement, and one of the defensive things of having a basement, in, in the, this, this area here right now, so if you can see the, the, uh, this, this area here is a deck that's absolutely shot, it's been up for 20 years, so that is part of what comes out. The ground, the grade underneath that deck is already three to four feet down. So we'd have to be, if we just did the ground level, we'd have to be trucking in dirt to backfill it all, to bring it up to ground level, and the other thing is, um, most probably, all, at least half of this existing wall, half of the wall that is exists right now, is probably no good. So we'd need to go down at least 42 inches, and down at this level here, because the grade is so steep, running west to east, the grade is so steep, when you get down to ground level, you'd be basically building, you'd be putting in place the walls for a basement on at least two sides. So, that was a rationale for doing it, and the other thing is, the city has got a one-time shot in the next 25 years, you're not gonna tear the building down if this gets done, so it was like, let's get the infrastructure in. So right now, the game plan with the basement, we're gonna get Rewald to give us two prices. One will be, I think they called it a white box, I mean, anybody know? Okay, so, the white box is the basic things that you need, which is the, uh, you know, the sewer pipes, uh, the electrical being put down there, anything that requires, um, something to be incorporated as it's being built. City at the time wanted the elevator put in with the basement, so we will be getting the two quotes, one will be the white box, and one for us will be more when it's finished. And the intent is to have it as a warming basement, um, it's gonna be a very nice size, it'll be around 2,000 square feet, bathrooms, elevator, storage area. One thing that we learned, uh, by various advisors, and, um, if you look at this again, where I'm, I'm drawing a line here, was this old wa, wa, there's a wall underneath this end of the building, this building has been built piecemeal over the last 50 years, so it started off as a log cabin on the northwest corner, and then it's been added on. So nobody really knows what the, what the foundations are like under here, so the recommendation was to stay away from it. Rewald said, if you wanna tattle that and go right up to this, it would be $60,000, just to shore it up, to be able to dig it out. So we've, we've designed it now where we stay well away from the, this original wall here, and, um, and have a very useful space. It is gonna be, we've already got, three of our classes want to use the place, we've got one of our largest, uh, best-known nonprofits that would like to be able to call it their home, and they meet weekly, so you can guess who that is, if you know what goes on. We've got 28 nonprofits now use the building, from weekly up to yearly, so it's, um, it's a very much in-demand place. So anyway, I'm gonna read off the paper that I, uh, I believe everybody got, and just walk around this. So even, um, a seal is asking me, what is this footpath here? Well, I'm not bothered if it gets taken out or whatever, that, at the moment, we, we, if you look at this here, all the grade lines here, this is what we call the overlook, and we'd like to, at some point, we'll come back to planning at a later date, when we get Nick's favorite landscaper, Vince, to design what we want done on there, and the idea is to have a boulder wall, not a wall, but, um, yeah, artistic boulders, big boulders, all around the grade, and then we'll, and, and maybe we'll, not ma, we'll use this footpath, this is the entrance, oh no, the entrance is here, this footpath, I'm hoping we'll be able to do it, a version of concrete, and naming bricks, the big ones, eight-by-fours, all the way down here, so this would be a large fundraiser. This would continue, this footpath, as I say, it's not quite accurate the way we perceive it, if you stand next to the building, um, it, this will lead on to what we call the overlook. We put a couple of benches on there, uh, it can have pollinator plants all the way around, Marilyn Trent will tell you, we, she's already been over, looked at it, we love what she's doing. So we'll come back to that at a later date with this area here. It is a fabulous view, looking north and east into the park, and nobody sees it, because there's a very scruffy bush on there that we keep trimmed a couple of times a year. So nobody really goes there, except the kids sliding on the, uh, the northeast side here. So that's the first thing about that. Uh, the north patio, this patio, it doesn't show it on here, but on the original, it was, uh, concrete to the left here, to the west, and then it was gonna be a deck here. There again, we took a lot of advice, Rewald, Bloomingdale, architects, everybody, we could put the basement underneath the concrete, and that makes it then that we will have windows all along this north wall and the eastern wall, all the way down here, all, on that area, uh, which will make it very light in the basement. So, that is that, on, yeah, it, it, it's, uh, north patio is concrete instead of text, yeah, the nu, with the new basement underneath. Um, the lion's room, um, now, we've squared it off. Uh, the lion's room at the moment is smaller, when the.
Alan, could you, um, orient everyone, I'm not sure everyone knows what the lion's room is.
I'm sorry, okay, this is this little room here on the end, um, it was, do, Lions Club made a big donation years ago, uh, to help Mary Lee build a darn thing, and so, when we redid it, uh, there was, it's about, from, from this south wall here, about three feet, it was, it was a cutout there. Well, it made it, if you stand at the back and look at it, talking with the architects, the roof line, it makes the roof line more difficult, so therefore more expensive. So we just squared it off, so the lion's room is a little bit bigger than what you originally approved, and, um, yeah, that is, that's that bit. Um, okay, so the concrete pad, this concrete pad here is largely exactly what we have right now, it's in a very poor state, we just want to redo the concrete. We are adding some concrete here, and we're adding some more here, and if, um, I would invite anybody that's not familiar, and anybody who's new on planning, really, come over, we'll give you a walk-around, and you can see it with your own eyes, anytime you wanna come, just call and, uh, and let us know. So, this, it's a, it's a bad area, there's some tree stumps there that the city took down, and concrete around the tree stumps, all that'll be cleaned up, and then this is a footpath that then goes round here, the doorway right now to Mr., was it Mr. Lord's Point? The doorway's on the eastern side here, the new door that goes away, we'll just have planting boxes along here, the doorway will be right on this side here, so it's hidden from the patio. Underneath here in the basement is a storage area, and we're very well aware of the floodplain. I'd always said, if you can't do a nine-foot ceiling to make it usable and attractive, don't bother. And what we're gonna be doing, and I believe that Rewald did use the same material at St. John's recently, instead of doing a wooden floor and, or metal floor with metal joists that stick down into the room below, um, it uses very large, they're like bridge-building concrete long slabs. So the long slab is whatever thickness, I'm not quite sure, six inches, eight inches thick, that means there's nothing protruding down into the basement, there's just a thickness, that will help with the elevation. So we're only gonna go down as low as we need to do to make it a usable, functional basement that everybody wants to use, that's what, that's the point right now. So we're, we're familiar with the, uh, the water table, which is, and in fact, that water table, um, you know, they did, they did boreings, I think, one, one up at the top here, one halfway down the slope, and another one right down at the bottom, down in this area. I do not believe there was a boring done right here, and, um, anyway, so we know it's two and a half feet below the current ground level, and so we're gonna be very wary of doing, uh, staying away from it. Okay, um, oh yeah, what has changed, we're just rebuilding this here. On the original plan, this didn't, this was gonna be ripped up and didn't exist. There was going to be a concrete pad all the way out here, across here, and down here, going into the park, but there was nothing here. Well, this area, this is where, if an outdoor wedding is gonna happen, this is where it happens. And we're doing, deliberately doing a curved staircase here, because a curved staircase is a picture staircase. Everybody loves standing on them, photographers down at the bottom, it's a great, great shot. Um, Jason for the city, DPW will tell you, that current staircase is shot, it's concrete steps, it's slipped, so it's cracked, and it's definitely not up to code, so that needs to go. Um, this, we decided to do a wooden deck here now, um, that connects to this southern deck, which is just gonna be resurfaced. We're not gonna rebuild the whole deck, but the trex on top is original trex, 24 years old, or whatever, that will get, I'll call it reskinned on this, this southern one, down here. So then, uh, we, this'll be, this, I think, I'm not sure if it was on the original drawings that you approved, I think it was, with the footpath, going from here all the way around to this point here. Um, and then, so, under this part of the, the, uh, out-of-scope building, that's this part here, there is a storage basement with a very, very low ceiling, so it'll connect the new storage building under, under here. And the old one, which will be a first, because we've not been able to move stuff from one to the other very, very easy. And also, um we call this the border wall. Whether we'll we'll get um Marilyn involved, we already have a a soca system around the whole building. That was another big donation that was made by Jim Nicholson. Um so whether this is an act, it looks like a wall or whether it is, um how can I say? You know, uh.
Terrace.
I'm sorry?
Like terrace?
A terrace, yeah, so it's not uniform, it's more natural. And we'll get the pollinators involved and uh and talk to everybody. And the reason for doing the concrete footpath around was so it would um prevent any slippage from the boulders. When they're in, they've been put in place. The uh the parks division uh are gonna love us when this 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 is done. Cause they hate this grade right now, they have to try to mow it and it's always a mess because it's very steep. Um moving on to the southern, you'll see here. Um right now, for whatever reason, this deck was built with a forty-five-degree angle corner. That is where the door is right now. To make it more practical, we it, there'll be a little bit of uh structure added so that it can be squared off. So this will be squared off here and then the doorway put on the side. And um.
So um pardon me, the the sidewalk.
This?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that goes, that's on the lower level?
Correct.
And then the deck is above?
Deck is, yeah, the deck is at the ground level at the upper. And then that is down at the patio level at the bottom of these stairs.
Okay.
And this deck here is on the on the first floor level.
Thank you.
So um I know that the question came up about out of scope. All this area in white is out of scope. The only thing that we're gonna do, and if we got approval from the city. We'd get going in as soon as possible to um, we need new roof, new siding and the decking. All that can be done in winter, soon as we get the funding approval to be able to do it. Because then with your approval, we can put the tent up. So and I'm I'm guessing it's a real work of art trying to guess, beginning of April. We might have to keep it warm for a while, but then they'd be able to go down and tear down the north wing. So we des- we definitely need the tent. We added up before when we were gonna be building, it worked very well. We went out and got ten sponsors to help to cover the cost and we'll be doing the same again. And um and then after it's done, I mean, our favorite place for a tent, if ever we did one again, would be down on the patio down below. That's where people love it. If they wanted to pay, they're coming in for an event and they were, they wanted a tent up, we'd be coming looking maybe for permission. Down there, it's largely hidden. There again, if you'd like to come over and take a look, you'll see the patio is largely hidden from view. From um by anybody walking in the park. So um I've got that, yeah, the two indoor windows and I think that is it. If anybody'd like me to move to um the drawing, Nancy, you talked about looking at the drawings on the upper out. Out of interest or if you have any questions, we can gladly.
If there's anything in particular you'd like to present about them, please go right ahead. Otherwise, I think what I'd like to do is ask the commission if there are any questions about what you presented. Or if there are any offerings that you wanna provide so they can update, refine the package. So when it comes back to public hearing, it's all set.
Just excuse me. Yes. Yeah, do we know?
Yes.
Yep.
I missed that, could you?
So my plane.
Yeah.
So I'm a seal, butchers, um city consultant engineer. I did work on the floodplain for the original uh layouts, so we did have grading plan, detailed grading plan for the site. If you can look at the drawings. So the floodplain limit is basically this, the ash line that we have here. There is multiple cross-sections along the river with the floodplain elevation per FEMA. We submitted for floodplain permit to basically have a berm to go around this corner. To avoid the water coming this way when we cut this berm down to have a walkout basement. And once we wrap around the building, uh I think the floodplain elevation in this location is lower than the building, the door elevation. So we can drain it out to a swale and then a pipe underneath this to drain it out. So we're gonna protect it with a barrier, basically a berm around the corner, just to keep the water on one side. And then once we go around the building, when the floodplain elevation drops below the basement floor elevation, we're draining out to the swale.
Yeah, it's, it looked really close, just looking at the.
Very close.
Just because I didn't see the a proposed finished floor elevation, I just assumed it was the same as the.
The previous one.
Area, the existing finished floor.
Yeah.
And the elevation shows a ten-foot difference, so if you just go down ten feet, you're at like fifty-seven and a half or so. For that door, which is about where the floodplain is.
Yeah, I think it's fifty-seven when you go around the berm, so we're gonna be half a foot higher than the hundred-year floodplain.
Okay.
Celia, is that gonna be documented for this next package?
Yeah, we will need to do grading plans before we go into construction, definitely, so we're gonna have to detail it. But next package, you mean for site plan?
Yes, when we go to public hearing, it whenever you submit.
Is it another month?
It would be February third.
Yeah, I should be able to do that. Just to like check the floodplain elevations and make sure it works. It did work with the previous layout, so I'm I'm assuming it would work.
How is stormwater being handled?
So everything drains to the south because as you go through the river, it drops down. So basically, the way we had it originally was a swale with a pipe taking it downstream like to the south. And then once, then drains on gravit- by gravity to the river.
So it's being collected by swale?
Yes.
Does that account for the roof and the new patio as well? Does that mechanically drain from the roof?
So we have an, that's a drain like underneath the swale to to pick up the roof drainage and then taking it down to the uh to the south. Basically by gravity will flow to the river.
I- is that typical in how we see development happening along the river in the city? That we're dumping storm into the river?
Well, we're not going all the way to the river, we're gonna basically open it up at the bottom of like somewhere in this area. Like somewhere in this area and then by gravity drains through the grass out to the rivers. By gravity is it's draining that way. Currently, this is how the area drains to the river. It's basically just this swale to pick up whatever draining from the building. And have a defined path for it to get to the bottom to the south and then by gravity flows to the drain to the river.
And is that, is that method typical for developments along the river?
Yeah, if there's no parking lot, you don't need stormwater treatment plant, a treatment structure.
So the parking lot drains differently?
Parking lot is on then, yeah, it's on the other side. Parking lot, it goes to the swale that Nick was referring to with the like riprap along the swale. And then out to the same location, basically to the river.
So the parking lot does drain into the river?
Oh, then, yeah. Through the storm sewer system, then to the river, everything drains to the river.
Hmm.
Yeah, really? Well, this building, but not not any development along the river, you wouldn't allow that, would you?
Like, does this building also drain into the river?
Sites that's basically gets built off a river. The parking lot, the drain through a storm sewer system, then into a treatment structure, then out to the river.
Because the treatment. Treatment structure.
That is typical, yeah, and you get through, you go through permits from the state and everybody else.
Okay.
It's typical.
So there is a treatment structure?
Currently, we asked for a treatment structure, but I think when this got built fifty years ago, I don't know when, I don't know they had a treatment structure. It goes into the storm sewer system. We have a riprap in the swale that was uh graded for the neighbor. Uh because she had flooding issues and then we uh made the swale deeper so won't jump the the ditch into her yard. And then had a riprap. I don't know if that system has a treatment structure currently, but we're not working on that. We're not touching the parking lot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, commission, are are there any questions to the presentations or comments of offer for their presentation, Commissioner Hauser?
Sure, so that was helpful, thank you, Alan. Um one question I do have is with respect to your letter dated December thirtieth. Um number one, it says curved footpath on northwest corner, design will be submitted for approval later. So I guess the question I I might have more for Mister Banda. My understanding is, wouldn't everything have to be presented on the site plan as is or?
Not really, being that that's our park, when we built the butterfly garden, we we don't have to go to the planning commission, that's not a structure. So we we would work with the parks department, take the city council, cause it's on our property and approve it that way. So it wouldn't be something that would come here.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's.
Appreciate what Alan said, but he wouldn't have to do that for a garden, you wouldn't.
And I just wanna make sure that it's consistent that if we're holding ourselves to one standard, it's forever one, okay?
If there was a structure there, it would come back here.
Okay, thank you.
Any else, Commissioner Hauser? What for the rest of the commission? Mayor Salvi?
Yeah, so uh Alan, can you go through the basement um drawing, which page is that, I was just looking for it?
You know, if I could just add to what the seal was saying. Um we we are pu- putting in a sump pump in the new basement right next to the um in this area here. Um so there'll be a sump on the pump under there. And just somebody explain to me if you could, when you you say you put the water into the river. If it if it comes down right now, all the, all this area is water, the roof water. Everything drains into this area right here. It's the natural grade on the on the property. And it sits there and then just goes down in the ground and it's a good hundred and twenty yards from the river. Does that still mean that you're putting the water into the river?
So so technically by Leo's house, there's a catch basin, so where the riprap comes down now, it gets underneath into that catch basin. If the water ever makes it through the grass, it would get in that same catch basin and that catch basin goes a hundred yards to the river eventually.
Okay, so that's why you call it?
It technically does, could get there, but it's not direct pipe to it.
Sounds cool, okay. Okay, let me uh, let me just sc- scroll this down.
It's the page after the pictures.
And then I've gotta get down, yeah, this is the, these are the computerized drawings. Um just done what it's gonna look like, big partition down the middle. And um it'll be very modern. Well, I'd always discussed with everybody, any architects, because of the nature of it. When people walk into the new rooms, it still needs to give the impression of warmth. It doesn't wanna be modern, it doesn't wanna be Royal Parkish where it looks extravagant. So it'll just be a very simple lighting at the moment. And that's why we got, um you know, the beams aren't exactly right in color. But so we put some wooden beams in, which is very typical from an architectural standpoint, just to warm it, warm up the room. Uh because the uh the history, we've got, we've got families that are having ninety-fifth birthday parties for people. That, you know, have been coming to having birthday parties for fifty years, I'm not exaggerating, all the time. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all year long. Okay, so what was Nancy, you wanted to look at the ground floor or the basement?
Basement, please.
This is the basement, okay, this is what we're doing here. So what you'll see here, see the the this wall here. It is, it's, this is the existing wall around, oh, the there. So we're about, we're gonna be about eight feet away from the existing foundation. Under the the wall that goes east-west. So we stay there and uh so it's got a warming kitchen, it'll have fridges. Um the event space is a very nice-sized event space. And now we have windows looking north and east. And this is the exit entry door into the basement. And there is the door going into the storage area. Um big cost savings on this project was the dormer windows. Reducing the size of of this. Um and the biggest single expense was the city's um inspector Randy. And the mechanical inspector. We had meeting, meetings with Nick, Re Walt, architects, everybody in one room. To ask about, we did not feel that we needed commercial HVAC. When the, when the room's not in use, it gets switched off or it's, it doesn't run much at all. So it gives us doing and and the savings are considerable. Um where we need to, um each space on the ground level, like on this space as well. Will have two residential furnaces and um air conditioners. And uh so that gives us the air movement that we need for them and the same on the ground floor. There'll be four. And the other big saving was that we've put the, um I'm gonna get down to the uh the the ground level here. So if you see this hallway here, we're going to enter, uh we're gonna create, the HVAC room is gonna be above this hallway. On the on the upper level, these are the two rooms here. So instead of it going nor- north-south, the the HVAC will be up be here. And we access it from the conference room at the top of the stairs. There's already an elevator that goes up to the offices in the old part of the building. So um it'll be easy to move stuff up there and very easy to service it and it'll be completely out of the way. But when I started, our bill to the city or the city's payment for utilities was eighteen thousand dollars. And uh we went around and switched all of the the uh fridges off, the freezers, everything that we could. Started doing controlled switch-off of the rooms. And I I think the city would tell us now it's gonna be around thirteen thousand a year for all, for the utilities. And which we will be paying once all this is done. We're not paying it at the moment, uh but there is a general agreement drawn up, it's never been activated yet. Because we're all waiting for this to be done. And we will be assisting the city to pay for the bond payment. I don't call it rent, cause this is a fifty-year partnership with the city. So um we will be contributing to that and we will be paying for the um the utilities uh when it's done. So um.
Did you get your question, Ian?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Anything else from the commission? I'd like to get to a point where we're offering comments so they can proceed with preparing their package. I think we heard a really good presentation, a lot of information. Uh there's a couple of gaps to fill in, obviously, from the report, from what uh Kenny has prepared. Not much from the commission, I think you answered questions we probably had in our mind. A couple of things I'll just add from an accessibility standpoint, I kinda connected some dots. I think the lower patio area is probably accessible via the elevator through the basement. Is that what you expect?
Um I would strongly advise against it because that isn't really an elevator, it's a lift. And what we'd be doing um is moving a lot more people up and down. Nobody likes using our elevator. It's very slow, very clunky and uh and it's very small. So this would be a completely different.
A different kind of lift?
Altogether.
So for accessibility, how are your guests safely gonna get down to that lower?
Through through the stairs there, at the end of the hallway or the elevator.
Well, that's what I was referring to, I assume that that elevator is how your your mobily-challenged guest gets. Okay, so they're going through the basement to get to the outdoors?
That is correct, yes, up to now, when it was Jim Nicholson's wedding, he rented a golf cart. So that we could drive all the guests around the park and down to the lower level where they had the wedding ceremony.
So that's by accommodation, you deal with it, which is good. So in in a situation where your building is not open. You'll provide, like, I'm assuming what you just described was an accommodation to take care of accessibility needs where your building doesn't.
I'm not quite understanding you, when the building is not open?
Well, if the building's, the elevator's not accessible because the building is not open.
Okay.
The need to get to that lower level, I mean, maybe that never occurs.
Never occurs.
Okay.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't occur. The building would, and it's um, that's something we've had to clarify with um arts and apples and various other things that have got. You know, it's gotta be staffed because then we have the fire department over there, people setting off alarms. Yeah, all sorts of problems.
I'd make that point in the public presentation, just so it's a something that doesn't have to get run through the wringer.
Yeah.
Um the other thing is, uh we didn't talk about exterior lighting too much, uh there's on your site plan, you show some. Wall packs are called, but nothing on the elevations. And they're positioned in a way that I think they're exit lights over the door, so if you scanned up to your site plan, they're basically.
Um that is something we will, I saw that comment, we will go back and look at that and take another look. I mean, we've got big lights that are automatic at the back of the building. Um, on the north end, uh, but yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll take a closer look at it.
I think you're, you're doing a nice job of, you know, appointing the building to situate itself in a park. So lighting's gotta be appropriate wall packs, in my opinion, would not be. Um, so that would be something I'll look to see how you handle, so, in your new submission.
Okay.
Um, let's see if I had a few other things that might help you in your presentation for the public hearing. I think a lot of it was covered. One other thing I'll mention, I, and I, I think it's a detail that you could probably handle easily, that patio, the concrete patio is an outdoor space. Based on the drawings, it's accessible only from the meeting rooms. So there's no exit from it based on the way the drawings are put together, except back through the building. So you might wanna show an exit from the patio due west.
To the park.
Actually, there's a-
Towards the parking lot.
There's a, there's an asphalt driveway from the south end of it. Um, I'm gonna try and-
Uh, maybe we're not talking about the same thing, the new uncovered concrete patio.
Sorry.
So I'm looking at your sheet number three when I'm making that comment.
Just let me get to it again. Okay. Yeah, let me blow this up here. Yeah, there's, um, okay, see the dotted lines here? That is an asphalt driveway. So you are, it's a path, okay. Um, so you can, you can dr- this is the entrance way into the park. Drives down here, this is what the DPW use and then they go down this way. It, um, we can ex- we can access this area on this pathway. It's not as wide as a road, but it's wide enough for a normal vehicle or a pickup truck or whatever. And, um, originally it was, I think it was on the drawing to be replaced. We said, as far as we're concerned, there's only one crack in it that's been patched. I said, that's the city's call. If they wanna replace it, that's up to the city.
Thank you for that explanation. That's not what I was referring to, though. It's the new uncovered concrete, it's called patio, but it's from your first floor. So it's going, it's the north end of the building.
Oh, this one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it's, so on the drawings, it shows horizontal railing all the way around it in elevations?
It is going to be vertical wires.
Okay, so that should be changed because it doesn't show that way now, which is a hazard. Um, but it doesn't show a way out of it, except by going back into the building. So I think you can, I think you can take care of that really easily by going west towards the parking lot. You just need to show it.
It'll, actually, it would go, uh, it would, it would, the exit would be at this area right there.
That's exactly what I was saying.
Right, right next to that footpath.
Yeah, that's what I would think, but you need to show it.
Yes, we'll, we'll do that. Yeah.
And you mentioned the width of the path. That was another thing I, and you mentioned the, the kinda curving stair, which I think is an awesome idea. The, the width of it seems too slight, uh, to me. It looks graphically around four feet. It's not indicated on your drawings, but five feet.
The curved patio?
The curved stair down to the patio, the lower patio. I, I think it just, I think you're, you're missing an opportunity, that's all. I'm, I'm not saying it's wrong. I just think there's a something you can do to make it even more grand, which is, I think, what you're trying to do.
Yes, and it would be, it would be not only-
By the boulder walls.
Boulders.
Yeah.
So, no, no, I'm, this, this, the stone steps.
Got those steps.
They just look like they could be more important than what they look like now. And I don't see a dimension, so I, I'm guessing it's four feet, you're saying?
I think on the, on the drawing, did you not show the, um, um, final design curvature to be determined on site?
Uh, perhaps, but I'll say we wanna see that next month when you're here.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
Uh, and then again, I just, I'm pointing it out because I think you can do something to make it super special.
Yes, could, yeah, I couldn't more agree. Okay.
Okay, so I, and there's nothing further from the Commission. I'd like to say thank you very much. I'm looking one last time. And, um, make your submittal and we'll see you for the public hearing at the next available time. So, wh- thank you.
Yep.
So for the Commission, we can make a generic motion to say we'd like to set a public hearing for the next available when they submit. Or you can choose February. You would be ready for February.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't do that. I'd say next available. If we can get February, we're not gonna do this twice. So when we get it, we'll bring it.
Is that gonna include the special exception?
Yes, both at the same time. So a special exception, public hearing and a site plan, uh, special.
So I have no problem making a motion, obviously, you know, setting it up for a public hearing at the next av- available. Uh, hearing, subject of course to the comments and edits and suggestions that were made by planning commission and as well as city planner.
Nick, we have a motion to our second. Second, by Commissioner Kenzuk. Any questions on the motions? For motion, roll call.
Casson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
Klausur?
Yes.
Kenjuk?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you for being with us and taking time because, uh, you did put a good, good deal of time into this tonight. Thank you. Okay, the next item is miscellaneous. We have one item from the city for the Planning Commission City Council Work Session.
Yes, on January twenty-fifth, Jeremy and I met today with John Jackson. John's still on there. So, um, trying to finally get our master plan slash turning into a zoning ordinance across the finish line. I'm gonna say most of you've never saw this, starting nine years ago, certainly not five years ago. City council's changed a lot, so on the twenty-fifth, we're gonna have a joint meeting. Everybody that can be there, twenty-third, sorry, twenty-third. We're gonna meet at, it's a Thursday night, seven o'clock here, John, at the Fire Hall, sorry. John will be there with Vidya and we're gonna go over where we're at and then where we need to get to, which is the accomplishing, or trying to accomplish this, get all the districts laid out so everybody understands them and then how we move forward to get to a final document that goes out to the public, that becomes a zoning map amendment that has all the new seventeen districts in it. We're gonna send this document out to you as quick as possible, at least a week in advance, hopefully earlier. You don't have to memorize it, but we need you to look at it. So when you're there, it, it just, a lot of these, as John referred to it today, were renaming districts. So it might have, used to be called general business. Now it's downtown edge one, which has a little bit of different nuances than downtown edge two because of the sides of the street, gray, sightlights, uh, sightlines, et cetera. So you don't have to memorize it. Plan Commission put yeoman's work into this. Most of those districts got the city council, we were ready to go. The text is ready to be put into a zoning ordinance. But we wanna just, one last time, new eyes on it, look it over. If there's some things we need to add or subtract, we will do that. Then Jeremy and I and John are going to, they're, the, the big changes are the industrial districts. We got rid of them. So now they're either mixed use or the residential based on the master plan. We have identified, we already went to North Phil a few months ago, identified, we think, twelve of those areas that we are gonna contact the owners of the property and say, just so you know, you will not be zoned industrial anymore. We're not changing your light, but this is the new opportunities that will exist under the new zoning classification. They certainly can come to a public hearing and make comments. We wanna get ahead of that and make sure that they know exactly what we're doing. There's a couple little ones, but most of them are the big industrial ones that we're gonna change. So goal is just keep getting through that, ultimately get a public hearing here for the whole zoning ordinance. The zoning map, take a city council, get it adopted, publish it, and now we have a fresh document. You're not gonna see the back end of the zoning ordinance because, as we talked about today, it's what changed was the districts. But in the districts, if it said, for instance, the sign ordinance, it's referenced in the zoning ordinance, we'll say you have to go through administration to get your sign done in the RP district. Well, there won't be an RP district, so then we're going to separately, you, you all don't need to see that, we're going to codify probably through AI, quite frankly. Make sure that everything lines up, so there's no, but right now, if you go in the ordinance, I can show you five or six spots that they, it, it trips over itself. We're gonna get rid of all those. But that's not something that goes through a process. It's just reference, changing words to reference to the document that will be the important one, which is the zoning ordinance amendment to, to the district. So we're gonna explain all that together, um, try to hack it through in one meeting. So we're gonna ask you to do some reading before that, just so you're familiar with the new names. Right now, you're used to office and industrial and research park and general business and CBD. They have new names now. Most of those things are the same, but for instance, I'll give you one example, we didn't want gas stations in the Central Bistic District anymore. Fred's BP can stay there as a non-conform use, but he can't expand it. So we thought was consciously thought out when we did the new master plan, how we wanna handle what we don't want. There, there are some things from the sixties in the zoning arts that don't exist anymore, so those were taken out in the new district. So, um, it shouldn't be a massive amount of work, but we'd like everybody to do their homework and read what you can read.
Thanks, Nick. What's the format plan for that? Is it a city council meeting or a planning commission meeting?
So we'll open it up.
So we're gonna open two meetings and generally will it be facilitated through the mayor and myself? Or will it be through John?
John.
Okay.
We did this-
So we'll do-
I wanna, I wanna talk to you ahead of time and we'll have a game plan.
Of course, that's a good idea.
Yeah, but overall, John, we did this before and John was the moderator for the meeting, working through the two commissions, so.
Excellent. Any miscellaneous from the Commission?
Just on that topic, um, city manager, can you confirm that all of the Commission has received the meeting invite? So it's Thursday, January twenty-third at seven PM?
Correct.
I see some head nods.
I have-
I, I don't see all head nods. Okay, so if we could resend that out to all the Commissioners, seven PM, the twenty-third. So this Thursday will be two weeks before that date, so could we get all those materials out to the Commissioners and City Council?
It's, it's John, I, John, I don't know if, I mean, it's already there, so possibly it's up to John, so he's got the access to it.
So the, the ma- maybe a link to the master plan and then this document? And I would suggest, as city manager said, taking a look at it, asking questions. You know, my goal is to run a, with you, a very focused meeting discussion where we have some specific outcomes. I was part of a joint planning commission city council meeting in the past and I felt like we just kinda wandered around and I don't wanna wander around. I wanna get in there, have some good discussion, make some decisions and have some output. So, um, that's my hope.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, the difference between this meeting and that meeting was we were so infantile in that process. There were people trying to design the districts. They're done. This is merely, if somebody knew, looks and says, why do you allow that in that district? That's a fair question. We're not trying to redesign these districts. They're, we're not doing, otherwise we'd bring each one back and start over. That's done. We've paid a lot of money to do this. This is to tell you how to get it so it, it works. It doesn't work, it doesn't exist right now. We're still going by the old zoning order, the old district. So this isn't a recreation. We're not redoing the master plan. We're sharing how to get it accomplished.
Implemented.
Mr. Commissioner Klausur?
Oh, I'm sorry, please, yes.
And then Commissioner Housen.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had questions and I, I think, um, Mayor Salvia addressed some of them of like what you said, read and studied before, but I'm assuming we'll get an agenda. Something with like, what is the objective, the goals? You just said a lot, Nick. And there's three of us at least that have not been through this process at all. So everything you said, I know you think we're gonna be able to do it quickly, but I have no, I, I just wanna have as much context as I can going into it so that we can keep it focused and I don't answer.
Absolutely. So that's what John, we talked about today. We're gonna lay out what the goals are, how we're gonna get there, absolutely. Uh, you're right, we're gonna act like, for you guys, you know nothing about it. So, and we don't want you in that position. And then you'll have a week or two to talk to us if there's, to understand anything detailed. But again, we're not asking anybody to redesign the ordinance. It's already done. It's comment on, look at it, see how, how do we get it to that finish line and implement it, so.
Sorry, can you just repeat? It's to the, um, the renaming of the districts.
Right, so, so back in the, the original zoning arts, if you looked them up today, we have I-one, I-two, O-one, O-two, B-one, RP Regional Pro- Regional, um, Research Park, we have, uh, CBD. So back in twenty-fourteen, um, McKenna did the original master plan. They felt like it was too generic. CDB was a, a half a mile long and a half mile wide. So we looked at breaking it down into seventeen different districts. So there's a downtown edge one, which might be Main Street from University to Second Alley to Alley. Alley to the west side. East side was downtown edge two because it had a fall off of the grade, so we, we renamed those. And then they each have distinct characteristics to that district. Research Park became mixed use. Some are, there's technology division, the, the technology, um, category. So they're all different names, but ninety percent of the existing zoning arts and the things that are allowed in the existing zoning arts are still the same. Everybody looked and said, well, we don't need, we don't want a gas station anywhere on Main Street anymore. So they took that out of the allowable uses. We know we're gonna create non-conformities and we know that, but they can't expand a non-conformity, um, without a rezoning, so. It was a lot. It's, it's been done twice in nine years and, and we never got there. We got hung up at city council with people wanting new districts like a, we have a Parks and Rec Open Space District. Well, that got confused with the setback from the River District. We didn't need a district. We needed verbiage to talk about in the district. How do you handle that? So we got hung up on three districts that we couldn't get over. God rest our souls, Sue Ann Douglas did not like the fact that we were going to straight up office. We have Office One and Office Two. Office Two allowed for medical office. Office One didn't. If you open it up to office, you could have medical offices downtown that need double the parking and regent on your park, regular office and it became a problem. So we've been tweaking that, trying to get it to work, to have the least amount of non-conformities possible. So, um, it, it sounds a lot more daunting than it is because the hard work was already done, so.
Thanks, Nick. Commissioner Housen.
Sure, and I would just ask, you know, to the consultants and the engineers, and I mean this with the utmost respect, please don't talk like consultants and engineers in the information you present us because make it plain English so we can all understand. And I think that will avoid a lot of the, the, the confusion in a sense and, and just make it as simple as possible. And I think we'll finally get some traction. That's just my own view.
And to, to Commissioner Klausur's point.
Thank you, Aseel.
Have it up there. We'll be able to point to and say, here was I-one, this is light industrial technology. Oh, look, there's not much that we could show you. So it's not, yeah, you're right. If you had to memorize it, it's impossible. It's a, it's a heck of a disaster.
Any other miscellaneous? Okay, public comment? Anybody in the audience? How about online? Anybody online?
No one's online.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.